We call the July 22, 2014, regular meeting of the School Board of St. Lucie County to order. And welcome to you all. Thank you for braving the rains and probably needed your boats tonight rather than your cars, but it's nice to look out and see faces with us tonight. So, thank you for being here. We have a lot to celebrate tonight. We have a lot of agenda items to go through, so it will be a good board meeting, and I'm glad you're here with us. If you would please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic of the free, one nation, for our own, in the physical, real, immediate, and just for our
Now, the Kids at Hope pledge? As an adult and a treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the talents, skills, and intelligence that exist in all children and youth. I believe all children are capable of success, no exceptions. Thank you. Let me take this opportunity to remind you that if you wish to be an unscheduled speaker with us tonight, there are forms available in the back of the room that you just need to fill out and get up to Mrs. Harrison prior to the beginning of the business portion of our meeting. We do have a public hearing tonight, so I will open the public hearing. It is in regards to the proposed adoption of amendments to School Board Policies Number 5.241, Number 6.20, and the student progression plans for elementary, middle, and high school. Are there any in the audience that wish to speak to this? Seeing none, come forward. Madam Superintendent, we'll receive your recommendation.
Yes, ma'am. I recommend the board approve the proposed amendments to School Board Policies 5.241, Number 6.20, and the student progression plan for elementary, middle, and high schools as presented.
Thank you. Board members, we have received the recommendation. Do I hear a motion? Moved by Ms. Hensley, second by Ms. Hilson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four zero. And this would be a good time to have in the public record that Mr. Ingersoll is absent tonight, but we do have four members here, so we have a majority. Thank you. Okay, we will then move to our CTA report, and welcome Ms. Tillman to the podium.
Madam Chair, School Board Members, Superintendent Yost, I really would just like to congratulate all those persons who have moved into new job positions, wishing you well in your adventure, your professional growth, and to let you know that we, as always, extend our warm-hearted advice and suggestions, even though you don't ask sometimes, but they're letting you know they are available. We look forward to all of our collaborative conversations. And there's something we said when we were beginning collaborative arguments. Oftentimes, you the interest-based decision-making process, always check before doing. So, sometimes you check with us before you do it, so therefore you don't necessarily have to hear my mouth sometimes. It's just a food of thought. Also, I'd like to welcome those persons who will be joining our school district this coming year, and just to remind them that we would encourage people, if you're not a registered voter, to become a registered voter. The primaries are getting ready to start, so we just encourage everybody, even in our audience at home, those people who are eligible, please go and register. It's important, because everything that we do in today's time is about politics. I know you hear people say, "Oh, I'm not a political person." I tell you what, you go to the grocery store, anywhere you go, everything is going to cost. Politicians are dictating what we do each and every day, so let's take charge of our own profession, our own destiny, where we want to go and how we want to get there. But you have to be a registered voter. You need to take part and take in charge of your own destination. That's what it's really about. But I do say again, welcome, looking forward to this coming school year, looking forward to continuing partnering with the school district so that we can continue to do things that we need to do that will be beneficial not only to ourselves, but our future generations to come. And just encourage our community to know it takes all of us to make sure that we are educating our children to the best of our, all of our abilities. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone here from CWA tonight for a report? Okay, seeing new one. It is noted on our agenda that we were to have a scheduled speaker tonight, but we have received word that he won't be able to attend, so we will skip that portion and move to the consent agenda. Board members, we have the agenda before us. Do I hear a motion to approve as presented? Moved by Ms. Hensley, second by Ms. Hilson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four zero. Board members, at this time, are there any conflicts that need to be declared before we move to the voting portion of our meeting? Okay, hearing none. Madam Superintendent, we will receive your recommendation for the consent agenda.
Yes, ma'am. I recommend the board approve a total of 51 consent agenda items this evening, beginning with Item 7.01 and ending with 16.1 as presented.
Board members, we have a lengthy consent agenda before us, and I hope you've all had time to go through them. Are there any at this time that you wish to pull for separate vote and discussion? Any at this time that you wish to comment on? I do want to comment on Item Number 8.1, Number 9.4, and 9.10. Any others? Okay. Let me first remark on 9.4, and that's just a housekeeping error. Before we vote, I want you all to be aware that the dates that were listed on the GFA International and the other engineering firm are incorrect. They will be changed before we sign the final document to reflect that the agreement will be entered into on July 23, 2014, and that it will remain in effect until July 22 of 2015 on both of those, just for housekeeping. Item 8.1, really, I would need to direct to you, Madam Superintendent, all of the salary schedules are listed tonight for our vote, and I wanted to be sure, I know we have to have these to move forward, but there are, what I feel, some unfinished or unresolved places in those schedules. So, can you speak to that a little bit specifically with the administration salary schedules, please?
Yes, ma'am. I'd be glad to do that. Administrative salaries, there is a salary schedule that is being discussed and reviewed at this time, and so that is not complete at this time. And in the interim, you are receiving a copy of the current salary schedule to be approved until you have an opportunity to review and accept or deny the presentation of a revised salary schedule. Same with our teachers. This is a time when we have been working with our union partners. We're looking at Pay for Performance, a structure that will be reviewed and presented. So, you were accurate in describing it as incomplete business, because they are not ready to be shared in entirety at this time, and those will come forward at a later date.
Just wanted to be sure.
Probably sooner versus later, but it will probably be August prior to the submission of that information.
All right. And then, Item 9.10 is the purchase of Meal Viewer Systems for select school lunchrooms. And I honestly don't know that there's enough information on this one to move forward, but there were not concerns from other board members, so I, if we can move forward with the assurance that this will be tracked, so that we'll see if it's making a difference in our schools, it's a new item and not one that I'm familiar with, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Just to have the record reflect that we want tracking to happen and updates with that as we move along.
Correct. And for those who do not have the agenda in front of them, that is, for Meal Viewer Systems, to help publicize our meals, as well as the caloric intake, the value as far as nutrition, et cetera. And it is for four high schools and for one middle school, and we will certainly track the impact, because there is a belief that the systems will enhance the appeal of our meals that are offered in our schools, and that participation would increase through the use of such systems.
And I guess my comment on that really reflects on all of them, that we know what our return on investment is for each of these items as we move forward. There's so many this time of year that come forward before we begin the school year, and I just want us to stay on task with knowing what our return on investment with each of these items is, so that it's not just a given that we do.
Yes, ma'am. So noted, and we will make certain that we do so on all of our contracts that can be tracked.
Okay, thank you. We have, board members, we have received the recommendation. Do I hear a motion? Moved by Dr. Mills. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hilson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four zero. And we move now to the superintendent and staff reports. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, and there's lots of good news to share this evening regarding the appointments that have just been approved by the board. We'll begin by asking our two executive directors of schools to please stand and be recognized, Mrs. Pamela Dampier and Mrs. Lydia Martin. Congratulations, ladies, on your new appointment. These are new positions found in our organizational structure, and they will be supervising 16 schools this year. Their primary responsibility will be to build capacity within our schools, so we're pleased to have them with us. As we move to the position of principals, as we call you forward, please come to the podium to address the board at this time. And we'll begin with Mr. Henry Sanabria. Mr. Sanabria has been appointed to the principalship at Lincoln Park Academy, and we are thrilled to have him with us. I know that this is a school and an appointment that he is more than overjoyed with, and we're glad to meet his expectations and see how the school will move through his leadership. So, welcome again, Mr. Sanabria.
Thank you, Superintendent Yost. Good evening, everyone. Superintendent Yost, Madam Chair, and School Board Members. It is truly an honor, as I stand before you this evening and publicly accept my appointment as principal of Lincoln Park Academy. First and foremost, I would like to thank God for blessing me with this opportunity. Secondly, I would like to thank my family, especially my wife, who has always supported me in all that I have chosen to do. I would be remiss if I did not extend my sincere appreciation and thanks to all who have inspired me, given me opportunities to demonstrate my abilities, and had the confidence in me to take on leadership roles throughout my tenure here in St. Lucie County. There are too many to mention, but you know who you are. Once again, I stand in the presence of many, humbled by this enormous responsibility that has been bestowed upon me. Like a captain of a naval vessel, I have been entrusted with leading and working alongside a team of true professionals, shipmates, on the voyage toward continued excellence. My voyage began nine and a half years ago and has landed me here today, before all of you. I would have never thought that my ultimate goal, becoming principal of one of the finest schools in the district, state, and the country, would come to fruition. And so it has, and now the real work begins. I came up in the so-called ranks, starting out as an English teacher, becoming an IB coordinator, and then assuming the position of assistant principal at Lincoln Park Academy. I was then provided with the opportunity to broaden my knowledge base and leadership skills by assuming the role of assistant principal at Treasure Coast High School, and that I did for two years. It was an experience that I know will serve me well as principal. And with that being said, I pledge that I will do everything within my professional and personal capabilities to live up to the trust and confidence that not only the School Board and School District has in me, but that of my colleagues, staff, teachers, students, parents, and the entire community. Thank you.
And as Mr. Sanabria makes his way back to his seat, I believe that Brad Lehman is in the audience in close proximity. Brad will be joining the Lincoln Park Academy team as an assistant principal. If you could please rise, Brad, so congratulations to Brad as well. Principalship for Southport Middle School, Mrs. Nicole Talis is being appointed, or has been appointed by authorization of the board, to rise from the position of assistant principal into the principalship. She has worked closely with former principal Lydia Martin, who was promoted this evening as well. So, welcome and congratulations, Mrs. Talis.
Thank you. Madam Chair, School Board Members, and Superintendent Yost, I'd like to begin by thanking you for this wonderful opportunity. I'm truly honored to be chosen as a leader of Southport Middle School. Southport Middle School is a school on the rise to excellence. We have the most dedicated, passionate, hard-working faculty and staff who continue to grow together and work together to improve their practice for the benefit of our students. In fact, just today, more than half of our faculty was at the school. They took time away from their vacation to come in for professional development and to collaboratively plan in preparation for the new school year. That's pretty awesome. I'm so grateful for each and every one of them, for the hard work that they do, and for the support that they've shown me as I transition into this new position. Tonight, I also want to thank Lydia Martin for her encouragement over the course of the last four years, and for helping to prepare me for this exciting challenge. She's an amazing person to work with, and I couldn't have asked for a better mentor and friend. Lastly, and most importantly, I'd like to thank my family and friends who continue to support me on this journey. I feel truly blessed, and I look forward to working with Terri to ensure a highly successful school year. So, thank you so much.
Mrs. Talis referenced Mrs. Terri, Miss Terri Sexton. If we could ask Terri to stand, she has been appointed as the assistant principal at Southport Middle School. I'd also like to welcome Ms. Andrea Popwell to the podium at this time. Ms. Popwell will be taking the reins as principal at St. Lucie West Centennial High School.
Madam Chair, members of the board, and Superintendent Yost, one of the first thoughts I had when I received a call from Ms. Yost regarding my principal appointment was that of my first day as a classroom teacher. I was excited, nervous, and hopeful to begin the greatest calling one could undertake. Upon my appointment as an assistant principal, I felt many of those feelings all over again, but with some hesitation. Was I ready to fulfill a major supportive role as an educational leader? Was I ready to affect positive change with both students and professional educators? I had so much to learn and so much to give. Today, I am filled with all of those long-ago feelings, but with the impactful realization that my role as an educator, educational leader, is no longer just to support. It's to lead, influence, and inspire. My responsibilities are many, and my role is substantial. My appointment to principal of St. Lucie West Centennial High School is a collective culmination of a lifetime of challenges, achievements, successes, and failures. I am grateful for my journey, I'm sorry, I'm grateful for my journey, and to my colleagues that have influenced me along the way. I, however, would not be standing before you today without the love and support of my number-one fan, my best friend, and my mother, Virginia Sullivan. Mom, thank you for your sacrifice, and thank you for your dedication to my goals and dreams. You are and have always been a terrific role model. I love you. I would also like to thank Ms. Pike for bringing me into the leadership fold. I would like to thank John Lynch for showing me the way to positively impact school growth, and I'd like to thank Kim Stefanic for encouragement, enlightenment, and her humor and grace. Lastly, I would like to thank Mrs. Yost, Dr. Wilde, and Mark R. for their vote of confidence as I take the helm of the best darned school in St. Lucie County. I am excited to continue my work at Centennial. I will collaborate with exceptional staff that I've been blessed with. I will build meaningful relationships with parents and students, and I will continue to focus on our student achievement and success. We are St. Lucie West Centennial High School, soaring to excellence. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Popwell. You are certainly the captain of your ship, and we look forward to your continued leadership and guidance for that member of our fleet. Also joining the administrative team at Centennial will be Doug Conapolco, and if Doug could stand at this time, we'd appreciate it. Welcome, Doug. I think we've got a fan club back there. Also appointed this evening, we'd like to ask Valerie Hall to please stand, assistant principal appointed at Sam Gaines Academy. We also have Jennifer Capani, I'm sorry, I always mispronounce your name, Capani. Ms. Capani is being appointed as assistant principal at Treasure Coast High School. Is Jennifer in the audience this evening? I believe not. So, we'll move forward to Tim Norfleet, who is here. Congratulations, Mr. Norfleet, being appointed as assistant principal at Port St. Lucie High School. Also recognized at a former board meeting, but they were not all in attendance, I see Ms. Cavoni out in the audience. Ms. Cavoni is the assistant principal at Fort Pierce Magnet School of the Arts. So, congratulations to our newly-appointed administrators within St. Lucie County. If you have family members, friends, or colleagues from your schools, could we ask them all to stand at this time? Those in support of our administrators appointed, that's right, thank you, appointed this evening. They are going to need your support in the days ahead, so thank you for being here. As I continue, I would like to share with our board members another copy of our organizational chart. It is color-coded, and there was an error on the last one that was presented, so that has been corrected, so that's for your information. We also would like to recognize a few of our teachers that participated in a recent workshop sponsored by Florida Power and Light Company. It was a robotics workshop, and there were 21 motivated and talented teachers in attendance from counties such as Miami Dade, Palm Beach, Martin, and St. Lucie County. And we had several teachers in attendance representing our district. So, thanks to Christine Persick, Kevin McGurney, and Sally VanderEet, who participated in this particular workshop, and now are eligible for a startup grant to utilize those robotics, the particular information that they acquired at the workshop. And we understand that many of the instructors during that FPNL workshop were students, who taught them to use the robotics and how to take it back to their schools and implement them. So, thanks to those individuals. I also received a postcard from several students who traveled to Washington, DC in the last month to attend the Youth Awards Program for Energy Achievement. And these were representatives from Miraposa, Morningside, and Lincoln Park Academy, and our students said they had a blast in Washington, DC with the NEED program. So, they had an opportunity to interact with energy and to be trendsetters as they learned about various programs that are available and how to utilize them within our community. Also received a press release from the Department of Education from the Commissioners Leadership Academy, and we happen to have at least one of those that was recognized for their participation in the St. Lucie Principals Program. It's a prestigious Commissioners Leadership Academy, and successfully completing that program in the audience with us tonight is Mrs. Lydia Martin. So, Mrs. Martin, if you'd like to stand again, we'd love to recognize you for this. So, congratulations to all of our recipients. It is lots of good news this evening to be shared as we work through the summer, and a reminder that we do have another meeting next Tuesday evening. It's back-to-back because of the budget process, so we'll have additional good news to share at that time.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Mr. Harold, do you have a report tonight? Board members, time for our reports, and Ms. Hilson, I'll begin with you tonight.
I just, at this time, have a grave concern with the fallout from the state of Florida not expanding Medicaid, and I'm starting to see the repercussions. If you know anyone who has a child that is a special-need child, there are some very tough situations for these families right now. What they have chosen, the state of Florida, unfortunately, what they are doing is privatizing and selecting certain companies that are very unresponsive. And I've spent a great deal of time calling legislators trying to find out what is going on, and many of our children, now, in the school system, of course, our Medicaid flows through the federal government in a different capacity, but the children that are in our schools also have outside therapy, and these children aren't going to be able to get the outside therapy, because some of our therapists are going for months without being paid. So, if you decide that you want to take this on and be a champion and start sending emails out and fighting for our children, because these are the least of these. These are children that have autism and many different sensory disorders, and basically, the legislature has just said, when I have called, they say, "We're retooling Medicaid." It's not that we didn't expand it, we're retooling, but this is going to be a blight on our community if these children are unable to get the help that they need. And my comment to Senator Negron's office was, if you want us to create aid districts and aid schools, then we have to work on the early intervention. It doesn't just happen. So, I hope that any of you that have any interest in this will fight for our community and for our children, because this is devastating to many of our families. Thank you.
Dr. Mills?
I'd like to commend, first of all, Superintendent Yost for your diligence in thinking out of the box in terms of our educating our children. I wanted to talk a little bit about the Chancellor Project. I want to make sure that we have community buy-in with that project, and I would like to see a presentation of the Chancellor Project, which is the project that we are going to implement into our district this year. It's regarding the, for those who don't know, it's regarding our schools that have made the list of the, part of the lowest schools in the state of Florida, which concerns me with our children. And so, I just want to commend our superintendent for, as I always like to say, thinking out of the box and taking us to another level with our children that are not performing well within the district. But I would like to see, I would like for us to remain very transparent with this, and that our community knows what we're up to and what we're doing to deal with this problem. So, I'm very excited about what is going to come out of it, and would like to, I think Carol mentioned earlier about with the children that we need with Medicare and so forth, and the children that need us there. We have a group of children here in St. Lucie County that needs us to help them more in the academic area and make sure they're successful. And so, I myself have volunteered my services to whatever area I need, I can help with. But I want to know more about the Chancellor Project myself. I want to see a presentation of it so that we can all have buy-in, especially our community, because I'm sure there's components to this, and each and every one of us have to be involved in those components to make it successful. And so, I just wanted to bring that up for this evening, and ask that we can work on that as soon as possible.
Absolutely. Mr. John Lynch has been working in tandem with me regarding providing service to our Rising Tide Schools. Those five schools are Sam Gaines Academy, C.A. Moore Elementary, St. Lucie Elementary, Dan McCarty Middle School, and White City Elementary. We view those as our underperforming schools. There is much performance to be gained, and with our support, we believe that those schools will reach their potential. So, we will be more than happy to provide a presentation as well as ongoing progress monitoring throughout the year as far as the performance of those five schools.
Thank you, Superintendent Yost.
Thank you, Dr. Mills. Ms. Hensley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will have good news for almost all of it. I will tell you that the foster care issue is still ongoing in our state, and we are monitoring that closely as more and more children are being taken out of the homes for very good reasons, but with a lack of appropriate placement for them. That will impact some of our school kids, so we're keeping a close eye on that. But the good news is that the Children's Services Council budget, for the first time in many years, is not having any cuts. I know. That's pretty good news. Our programs have been held as harmless as we could for five years, and this year- five years, and this year, we actually will be able to hold them without any cut at all, even a 1% or 2%. So that's good news. Also, the statistics show that with the help of Children's Services Council, Roundtable, and all of our partners, that we have actually bent the curve. No matter what the statistics, conventional wisdom say about poverty in our community, our statistics in our community are going in the right direction for our kids, and that's a very good thing. And that we have no peer counties in Florida, as far as we know, we have no peer areas in the United States that actually make that statement. So that's good news. We also have an expanded pediatric dental program through the hands clinic that will be taking place. We think we have procured enough money to actually expand our offerings to our kids, more schools, and also provide a sealant program, which will help at the long-term for their dental health, which means their physical health, and therefore their attendance at school and all that sort of thing. So that's also good news. Last week, Ms. Harrison, the superintendent, and I went to a barbecue at Treasure Coast Council Local Governments in Okeechobee, and had the privilege of listening to some of the real history of our area and of Florida, and it was absolutely fascinating. And so I think that is something that most of us, you know, we've all read Land Remembered, I think, or if not, go read a Land Remembered. And there is a, a fourth-grade version of that, that is pretty interesting. So I think that that gave us a lot of opportunity for discussion, because as you know, a lot of us are not from here originally, and getting to know our community is something that some of us did. We moved here, we read everything we could about our county and our region. That's not necessarily universal, although I had thought it was. So it was very enlightening. It was a great opportunity. We actually had a lot of legislature, legislators that showed up this time. So, you know, it is election year. So it was a very good opportunity, and it's always nice to know that St. Lucy County is at the table. St. Lucy County education is always part of the conversation.
Thank you, Ms. Hensley. I would just like to close this tonight by issuing our profound thanks to all of you, all of our educators, whatever your daily task may be in the school system, for what you do every single day for the children of St. Lucy County. We do have much to celebrate tonight. We have new leaders among us. We have a positive direction to move forward in. We do have work to do, no doubt about that. All of you are aware of that as well. But we are a good team, and I am extremely proud of each and every one of you, the work you do every day, and I am extremely proud of our students, because every day they come to school, ready to absorb and learn, and take home, and rest, and come again another day. And you're there every morning to greet them, and to let them know that there is an adult in their life who cares and wants them to succeed. And that is the mission of St. Lucy County Public Schools, to meet each child every day so that we can ensure their success. Acknowledging that we have a ways to go is healthy, and we're all aware of that. But I want you to know how much I appreciate your efforts every single day, in the classroom, whether it's an administrative level, whether you feed our students, whether you're in the clinic and take care of their medical needs, drive them to school, drop them off in the afternoon, whatever contribution you have to the students and their success, thank you on behalf of the board. And we look forward to a really wonderful and exciting 2014-2015 school year. Thank you again for being here tonight, and we, before you conclude, I neglected to recognize two new leaders amongst us this evening.
By all means.
So we have more new leaders to recognize at this time. Dominic Clayton is in our audience. Dominic, if you could stand, please. Dominic will be our assistant principal at Westwood High School. Congratulations on becoming a member of our team. Also, Mona Rae Buchanan from Centennial High School. And you've got a very vocal team, Ms. Buchanan, and congratulations on your appointment to that team as well. It will be a grand year ahead, and we do have places to go, but we know that we are up to the task. We feel the sense of urgency, and we will be moving forward within St. Lucy County. Thank you, Madam Chair. Absolutely. Well, again, thank you to each of you for being here with us tonight. I know in just four short weeks, our students will be back amongst us, and have to admit, I'm looking forward to having their faces back in the, in the boardroom with us, and that's, that's why we do what we do, and I miss their faces during the summer months. So it's nice that you all are here tonight. Ms. Harrison, did we have any on schedule? Okay, we have no other business to come before us then, so we are adjourned, and safe travels home in this wet weather.